Ladies and gentlemen, I'd like to call the meeting to order. Can we please stand for a pledge to the flag?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the record, this is a special public meeting of the Bayonne Board of Education. It is 7:27 PM, the nineteenth day of February. We're convening in the Anna J. Herbert Meeting Room, the siding officers Joseph Broderick, President of the Bayonne Board of Education. Those in attendance include Dr. Gary May, the Board Secretary, and Mr. Mitchell Pasquale, our Board Counsel. The meeting's open to the public. I'll take a roll call. Trustee Alonso.
President.
Trustee Cruden.
Here.
Trustee Munoz.
Here.
Trustee Velado.
Here.
And President Broderick.
Here.
Mr. President.
For the record, adequate written advance notice of at least forty-eight hours, given the time, date, and location of this meeting, with the agenda was provided as follows. Notice was prominently posted in City Hall at 630 Avenue C on the bulletin board reserved for such announcements of the Board of Education. The Board Secretary sent such notice to the Jersey Journal and the Bayonne Community News. Notice was filed with the municipal clerk of the City of Bayonne, Mr. Robert F. Sloan.
At this time, I'd like to turn the meeting over to Dr. Dwight Fennig. He's our Senior Search Consultant for the firm Hazard Young &amp; Associates, who are assisting us in the superintendent search. Mr. Fennig.
Thank you very much. The purpose of our meeting with the public tonight is to gather input for the superintendent search, and this is considered a community-focused group, one of two that we are holding. We held one this morning. What we will do is use the information gathered -- excuse me, this evening to support our leadership profile that we developed for the Board. The purpose of the leadership profile, and it includes the information gathered through focus groups and also the online survey, is to guide the search. The final profile product, excuse me, will be presented to the Board publicly, I believe, on March fourteenth, and we will talk about the trends that we've gathered from not only this meeting but all the other meetings we've held in a narrative form. Then there'll be a portion of the profile that follows with the direct comments from each of the groups, and then in the end, it will say what are the characteristics we're looking for in candidates who will apply for this position. Again, I emphasize that this document guides the search. It is not the end-all for the search, and it's a document that helps us in recruiting candidates as they review information about Bayonne. I am a former superintendent in three, four districts. I was also Deputy Commissioner in New Jersey under Bill LeBarre. We figured it out today. We have about one hundred and twenty years of educational experience between the three of us, and we've been doing searches in different ways over time. When we go through our -- the purpose of our meeting tonight, again, is to gather that information. I'll have my colleagues introduce themselves, and then I will tell you how we're going to proceed, kind of following a Board procedure that you use almost every meeting.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Eugenia Lawson, and it's a pleasure for me to be here. I actually, my background actually comes from having been an ESL teacher, working at a community college, board member at a community college and another four-year institution. I worked at the State of New Jersey Department of Education for about twenty years, serving in several capacities, including Title IX, manager of three regional centers, director of the urban districts, serving as Monmouth County Superintendent of Schools, and then working at a district prior to coming to do this work. It's a, it's a, I, one of the things that I bring to this search is the diversity piece, having, because I am Cuban and can certainly lend some information. I know you have a very diverse population here, so it's, it's a pleasure for me to be here and be part of this process tonight.
Good evening. My name is Mel James. I'm a former teacher, vice principal, assistant superintendent, and presently an adjunct professor at William Patterson University, where I observe student teachers, advise teachers in the Patterson School District who want to become school administrators, and also a mentor of a elementary principal in Patterson. I'm also an associate here, and I'm glad to be here to work with you to find the best superintendent that we can for your district. Thank you.
What we've been doing with all the groups is really just talk about three questions, and what we thought we'd do to meet the formality constraints of the Board meeting is for each question, for people in the audience, they're free to stand at the microphone and have three minutes for each question, and we will do them one at a time. So if you want to answer all three, we'll have you come back up to the mic again. Even though your names will be taken for the record that's being kept for the Board meeting, we do not, in our recording of statements that's said to the group here tonight, include any names in our leadership profile. Those, all the names are eliminated. We will say, we will combine comments made tonight with those made this morning and say it was from the community groups. The first question is, what do stakeholders value regarding your schools? You know, what strengths do they desire to retain and build upon? So if you'd like to speak on that, you can please come to the mic, and we'll try to record what you say. The second question will be, what are the issues that the district currently faces and, just as importantly, will be facing in the near future? And then finally, what are the personal and professional characteristics you and your community expect the new superintendent to possess? What we try to do, we try to be respectful of not mentioning names or past performances of folks, you know, because we're here to gather information about this search. So we'll start with the first one, what the stakeholders value regarding your schools, and sometimes your district as a whole, or your community as a whole, and what strengths do you desire to retain and build upon? So if you'd like to add some information on that, again, to meet the formality practice of the Board, we would have you come up to the mic now and speak for three minutes on that question.
In other words, what's working in the district that you want to keep?
Do you need my name and address?
Please.
Joe Wyatt, 290, 301 Maple Avenue, apartment 261, North Plainfield, New Jersey. What we want to keep is somebody like Dr. Wanko, okay? Because he brings integrity to and transparency to a sadly dysfunctional school system, okay? And you need to find somebody that has his character. And I think the primary thing that Dr. Wanko brings to this is when he's wrong, he admits he's wrong, apologizes, and moves on. This is very refreshing, because in the past, we, mistakes were made, they were never acknowledged, they were swept under the rug, and there was no transparency, stuff just happened willy-nilly. It didn't happen willy-nilly, it happened for a purpose, but that purpose was hidden. So we need transparency, we need involvement of the faculty. We've got seven hundred and forty-five highly educated people, and nobody listens to them.
Thank you.
Charles Ryan, 123 West Thirty-Fifth Street, Bayonne, New Jersey. You had asked, what were some of the issues facing the district going forward in this question, if I understood it correctly?
And the first question, we were trying to say, what do the stakeholders value regarding your schools? We're trying to do them in order so that people, you know, have a chance to take the three minutes for each one.
Which, all right, one of the things, some of the things we value in this district, we understand the need for a system that, as Mr. Wyatt said, tends to hold people accountable and includes people in how we reach those decisions. We need to know that the parents are consulted, as appropriate, that it's recognized that they are the experts in their own children, and that when the superintendent, in consultation with the Board, comes up with the necessary policies and procedures to implement the policies that are put in place, that people will follow them. We did have a budgetary crisis. We are just recovering from that. The taxpayers were burdened with very steep tax increases because of it. Somebody, going forward, needs to establish budgetary discipline. That has to happen. It didn't happen. Nobody stole it, so by definition, it was misappropriated, misused, whatever. So we value that. We value that type of accountability. We want people to do their jobs, we want them to do it well. We value the fact that we have safe schools. We actually have very safe schools, but these are troubling times. As Mr. Wyatt said, we have a leader who actually wrote a book on it. We need somebody who can take his place. We now have two types of armed security in this district. That is both good and bad. We shouldn't need it, but we do, but it brings a whole host of problems with it. So we need somebody who understands what those problems are, is willing to work with our police department, and do what is necessary to maintain the safety of our children. With that, it needs to be recognized that armed security is the last line of, last line of defense. We need somebody who has an inclusive philosophy. We literally need to, we need to make our schools both softer and harder at the same time. Harder in the form of armed security guards, as needed, softer in the fact that harassment, intimidation, and bullying is treated seriously, that they are not allowed to happen, and that when it does happen, and it will, they're children, they're going to make mistakes, that they will be instructed, they'll be directed, they will go through a reasonable process to help them become better students and better citizens. We value that. We value, we value when our superintendent will be able to tell us what's going on based on hard data, whether it's money, or academic rigor, or anything. You're saying it's good, but is it? How do we know? Our teachers and administrators are reportedly to the state, it comes in the paper, that they're among the top administrators and teachers in the state. They score very high, but when our state report card comes out, we're in the bottom half of the state. That doesn't line up. Something is wrong there. So we want a data-driven set of decisions. We want people to tell us what's going on, and how do we know that's what's actually going on? Again, we had a budgetary crisis, and until that happened, everything was fine, until it wasn't. We don't need crises any, we don't need crises anymore. We value leadership. We value somebody who's willing to take responsibility and say, this was my fault. Because that's the ultimate test of leadership, isn't it? I gave the okay for this, and it didn't work. It's mine. Everybody could say it's, it's great, when you're, when you're doing great, but it's not working. We need to change. So those are some of the things that we really do need, and we really do value.
Does anyone else would like to respond to number one? On number two, we'll move on, and we'll probably have time to come back to number one if people want to add more things. What are the issues that the district currently faces and will be facing in the next three to five years?
No? How, the most pressing issue is how are we going to recruit and retain master teachers? Okay? Currently, we have, I've been here fourteen, fifteen years, twelve of those years I have not had a contract. I have been in financial insecurity. A teacher cannot perform when they don't know when they're going to get, what they're going to get paid, and when they're going to get paid. It is absolutely unconscionable that we go four and five years without a contract. Okay? Now, twenty percent of our faculty is in the first three steps. You make it so hard for people to get to make a living, a living wage, that pretty soon, as all, as the faculty ages and goes off, you are going to have a hundred percent of your faculty in the first five steps, which means you've got young people with no experience, and you've lost all the knowledge, the corporate knowledge, if you will, that's contained in the teachers. We are the only people that deliver education. No one else does. Not the administration, not the Board of Education, obviously that's not your job, not the janitorial staff, nobody, not the curriculum, no written document. There's, the only thing that delivers education is the human beings that are the teachers and faculty of the school. If you continue to treat them like dirt, like they're the enemy, then you're going to end up with a faculty that can't, your, the quality of your education is going to slowly deteriorate when it'll just be an exercise in sitting in a classroom for four years. Okay? So that's, and, but we do have dedicated teachers who slog on, but they could slog on a lot better if you treat people decently, like human beings, okay? For thirty years, we've had this financial insecurity for the teachers. It's got to stop. You can't recruit and keep good people if you don't pay them. They're highly educated people. They can do a lot better in, in the real, in, you know, in the non-educational world, so.
Thank you. Anyone else again on the issues that are long and short-term facing the district, the key issues, or issues you think need to be addressed, or will have to be addressed within the near or distant future? Okay, then I'll, I'll move on to number three. What are the personal and professional characteristics that you, as participants in this community forum and the community, would like to see or expect the new superintendent to possess?
My name's Glenn Flora, 613 Broadway. I'm the commander of VFW Post Historical Museum down on Ninth Street. We were responsible for having nine thousand kids last year deliver, go through the school, and it's teaching them about sacrifice and their hometown history, and it's been growing. We've been doing this almost now fourteen years. Coming this October, the pulse will be a hundred years. Talking about a school superintendent, I ain't like you guys, ain't no college guy. I got a DD 214, and I'm proud of it. That means I serve my country. And a superintendent, you want a superintendent, in my opinion, that's not only what should be the Colonel, the General in charge and everything, but they should be involved with the children themselves, go to their activities, their parades and games, and just pay attention, get involved with them, even get involved with the teachers to find out if they got family problems going on or whatever, just to keep it as a, like when we're in the service, teamwork, keeping together. At the end of real affairs, I know some people ain't going to like what I say, but I got to say it because it's me. If you're looking for a school superintendent, look in the background of Patricia McGinn and her background, how she was, and what a great superintendent I think she was, and a teacher, forty-five years. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to add? Thanks.
It's instructive to, it's instructive to compare and contrast the current administration with the previous administration, and I have a folder here that I'm going to give you that are letters that I have written to the, to the Board last year, and it does a comparison between the present administration and the present superintendent and the previous superintendent, how they acted, what their characteristics were, and more importantly, what the consequences of those characteristics, okay? As far as I'm concerned, the most important thing that we need, we need to have someone of Dr. Wanko's character, okay? And by, again, for me, there are lots of, there are lots of things you could judge him on, but one of the most important things is he's accessible, and when he makes a mistake, he says, you know, I'm sorry, I apologize, and everybody moves on, okay? There's not this sense of being hounded. And also, in my opinion, the next superintendent should, cannot have anything to do with Bayonne, cannot be a person who lives in Bayonne, who works in Bayonne, who is a resident of Bayonne, because what happens is, listen, the, I understand that the raising of the money to fund the schools is a political issue, but the delivery of education can never, under any circumstances, be politically motivated. And, and what's happened in this school district is that the political influence has permeated the school system. It reeks from the building, okay? And that destroys the educational intent of the school, because it's only about pleasing somebody rather than delivering education and turning out well-educated students who are successful in life and college. And so the criteria, whatever you do, be sure you present the bore. I know there are going to be people from the district that are going to, that are going to apply, but you got to search people that don't have that connection to give the Board the chance to pick one of those. And I'm telling you, if you pick somebody from Bayonne and allow this stuff to go back to the way it was, I'm going to be the first one to scream from the banana trees that it, and when it goes south, I'm going to be the first one to tell you I told you so. And also, I have a list of questions that you might ask the superintendent. I've given this, like, and I, by the way, I asked these of Dr. Wanko. Well, actually, I went with this list. I was going to ask him, but I didn't have to ask because he answered them right away by his demeanor. Are you going to lead or rule this district? We were ruled before. We are now led. We must be led, not ruled. Do you get angry when people who just, do you get angry with people who disagree with you? Dr. Wanko does not give, he thinks about, if he thinks you're wrong, he'll tell you, and he'll tell you why, before just the mere standing, listen, there are seven hundred and forty-five teachers. I am the last teacher standing that stands up in front of this Board. You got to ask yourself, how come I'm the only one? There are a lot of well-educated people. They are afraid to stand up, because they, they've been, people get angry with them. And what you have to remember is that the previous administration is still here, because no one under Dr. Wanko has changed. They are all the same people. So you have to have a very strong person to come in here and try to keep going what he did, and you can't do it if they're politically influenced. They will not be able to make the hard decisions.
Thank you. We appreciate that. Thanks so much.
Glenn Flora, again, 613 Broadway. Yeah, I don't understand why we would have to go out of Bayonne. Are we saying we got all dumb teachers, people in Bayonne? I'm seventy years old, born and raised here, and I know many smart, good teachers. I have dyslexic myself, and if it wasn't for some of those teachers, I don't know where I would have been today. So I disagree with that. And as far as the present school superintendent, he's a nice guy, he's okay, but like, I invite people, teachers, down to this museum to show what I'm teaching these kids. It's nothing about killing or anything like that, it's about sacrifice, why we serve our country, why you guys all got a job, because the guys that served, that's what we teach them. It's not taught in school no more. You're still teaching about George Washington and the rowboat going across there. This is different now. It's about teamwork, working together. The problem in Bayonne is, he's right, keep the political crap out and work together as a team. We're strong, we're Bayonne, we're Hudson County. We don't need anybody out of town. Thank you.
If I could just clarify one thing about the search, and I, I thank you for your service, and you know, my mother and father were both Marines, so I used to joke that I was raised by the Marines in the woods. And, and I did not serve my country because I was part of the draft lottery. And my father-in-law, who's ninety-four years old, still does some speaking. I'm going to hook him up with you because I got the card, because he's Navy, so, you know, he's very proud of that heritage, and he does speaking engagements at ninety-four years old. The focus of our search, and you know, and we hear, we hear the sides and names about past experiences, our search is open to everyone. We are a national firm. That doesn't mean, because we heard it said a lot today, you know, some of who, who wants to come here from California, you know? Well, you'd be surprised that candidates for superintendencies all across the country come from a whole bunch of places, but it's our job to make sure that from the information we gather, again, that guides the search, presents candidates to the Board who are, who are going to be able to do the job. We don't select a superintendent, the Board does in the end. It's the most important job, and they'll do, maybe in their career as Board members. But I think the important thing is that, you know, we bring candidates to the Board, and we'll make sure they're qualified. In terms of being from Bayonne or not, no matter who applies for this job, goes through the same process with us, not as a independent kind of broker outside with anyone else. The Board's agreed to that contractually, we've agreed to that contractually, and that's something that will occur. And, you know, we wanted to make that clear, and the question was asked when we presented how we do this, that everybody goes through the same process. So they will have to meet the same criteria, which will be in conjunction with the characteristics we develop and present to the public, and of course, with all those things they must do by law to be superintendents in New Jersey. So I just wanted to make sure you were clear on that. Yeah. Oh, I know that. No, I, I, I agree. You know, from what we know about your community, we would agree that it's a proud community, and, you know, and I think, you know, I think that a lot of people have represented that to us in different ways.
Hi, excuse me, my name's Dennis Welbeck, and I live at 780 Avenue C here in Bayonne. Have you been advertising already for the position?
We still have an ad to clarify with the Board, but it's on our website already, yes.
It's on the website?
Yeah.
And then one of the things that's come to my mind, would you mind telling us what it is that you look for? What are some of the outstanding characteristics that you look for in the traits and personality when you present candidates to the Board? I mean, how long have you been doing this?
Okay. I've been doing, well, superintendent searches, I've been doing for, just searches alone, for five, well, for four years with HYA.
For four years.
I also did two superintendent searches when I worked for the Department of Ed as Deputy Commissioner for Newark and Patterson.
Okay, and then if you don't mind, would you mind telling us what are the outstanding characteristics that you look for, which makes an individual candidate a little bit better than the next one that you bring to the attention of this panel?
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, the, the key is that, you know, there are some general things you may speak to, and I will, but also, these meetings play a large part in finalizing what those things will be. We will need someone to be, you know, of high character, be open, be honest, those kinds of things that are more general. By the same token, you know, we want to make sure that people have current knowledge of use of data and technology in school systems, not just for the sake of presenting it and saying we're doing good or we're doing bad, but do they understand how those kinds of informative bits play a role in informing instruction and helping teachers teach? You know, there's a lot of data out there, and sometimes it doesn't get related to the classroom, and it needs to be that way. Superintendents that are successful now understand how to do that. They have a bond between their, their work and professional development, and we've heard a lot about professional development today, whether it exists, whether it doesn't, what it is, is it valuable, you know, those kinds of things. So an outstanding superintendent uses professional development to move the district forward. Moving the district forward doesn't mean that the district's doing poorly, it means you're moving forward in areas where you have done well, and you're picking up in areas where you haven't done well. areas where you haven't done well. Good superintendents now know about infrastructure of a district. And I'm not just talking about buildings, I'm talking about all the systems of a district. Where districts have complaints about superintendents most times is because they don't have a system approach to things. You know, you may not do or have clearly defined who does what job and when. And at least to come in and clarify that, you may have some of those things in place that work very well, but they want to, they want to have superintendents who understand, you know, how does special ed affect classroom instruction? How does the air conditioning in a room affect instruction? All of those things combined together, the infrastructure things, the systems that run school districts, because the superintendent's in charge of everything. The next piece is, no superintendent does it alone. If we have someone apply through us for any number of jobs, and they say, "I, I, 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 I," we look at them and first go around and say, "All right, you've said that, but what does that mean?" Because, and I say this at every meeting, and some of my superintendent colleagues don't like it when I say it, no superintendent is responsible for test scores in a district. I could say they were raised while I was here, and they went up, and that may be true, but I'm not solely responsible for that. So it's about a superintendent setting a tone that makes one, that makes people want to work toward that goal, taking a look at your mission, your strategic plan, and those things, and make it workable. Every one of us sitting here has probably seen a strategic plan that is, you know, laden with dust sitting on a shelf, all right, somewhere that you've worked. Good plans are in effect every day, they can be worked on every day, they can be tweaked. Strategic plans used to go out five years. I think they ought to go out three years, because our times change so quickly. So sticking with the mission and the plan, tying it to the systems, is something the new superintendent ought to be able to do. You know, retaining and attracting personnel was mentioned here tonight, it's been mentioned by every group with whom we've met, and that's important for any district. You know, you want to make sure that the people you hire are not only dedicated to your district, but most of all, dedicated to your kids, all right, because I think that's important. And they're giving up a piece of their life to interface with kids. You know, teachers, and probably administrators, speaking from that point of view too, in most places, care a lot about kids. If you don't like kids, you're in the wrong business. If you don't care for kids, you're in the wrong business. And I think, you know, we ask them to demonstrate, "Well, how have you done that? What are the things you've done?" Those are some of the things, and there would be more, that will also come based on the information we gather. But the key for us is, demonstrate that you have done that, and give us the examples. We'll be telling the board, the board committee to, you know, and they already know that, to ask those same questions. You know, it's easy to say you did it. It's easy to say you did it, it's easy to show you did it on a piece of paper, but now, demonstrate for us how that's been done. Who can we call to check that out? That's what we do first, and if the board wants to carry that further, they can too, but we vet candidates pretty thoroughly, because that's important. And we feel that by doing that, we've seen people that have done things. Now, not all people may have done things the same way, but those, that's the basis for our search, without going into a lot more. Hopefully, that helps.
Can I say something?
I'm...
Just right here.
Mr. Wyatt, just so that you get picked up on the microphone, please.
I just want to say, the fact that I do not live in Bayonne has nothing to do with the efficacy of my arguments. This is an example of what's wrong with this district. You cannot tell it like it is. And everyone up there on the board knows that. So don't dismiss what I say because I don't live in Bayonne, and I know what Bayonne is like, I spend my working life here, I interact with children, I've taught over 1,500 children, I know what this town is like. And some of it I don't like, and I wonder how it happens. But the fact that I don't live here should not dismiss what I tell you, the efficacy of my arguments and my data should come first. And if you don't believe I have the data, just call me before you and question me, and I'll give you chapter and verse of why I think the way I do. I just wanted you to know that, okay? Because I don't like people.
Thank you.
Try to compare being with a superintendent, I ain't no superintendent, but I'm a commander of a post, and I'm responsible for it, and I am in charge, like you were saying, of everything that goes on. Nothing goes past me. And in that, some people are not going to like me, and some people are going to like me. And you've got to deal with that. So I can't see where you come from, or whatever. People are going to judge you on your personality. I mean, sometimes you guys will say things we don't like, we don't disagree, don't mean I hate you, and I'm going to support you, but I just think that goes along with a superintendent, and it has nothing to do with not living in Bayonne, it just has something to do with from Bayonne. Our town has grown bigger, we're building high-rises, and eventually, we're going to have to build another school, most likely be down MRT. Right now, we're in a problem with naming, and we have three Medal of Honors in Bayonne. And we just voted to name Nikaresco School, not Nikaresco School, Midtown School after William Simmons Medal of Honor. Right now, I'm processing, Washington, we're going through our fourth Medal of Honor, and that's going to be another school. So I just wanted to put that across there.
Thank you.
I'm proud of Bayonne.
We treat all information with the same degree of efficacy for classification. We don't, you know, we don't play into specific comments that go that way, so we do that. Right.
Melissa Deskey Rodriguez, 178 Avenue F. I know I spoke earlier, I just kind of wanted to add to the characteristic piece. When you think about a superintendent and how they're going to assess their district, I think that person has to be able to take the entire puzzle and see it as a picture, and then start to break down those pieces as far as schools, areas, demographics, teachers, teacher abilities, students, student abilities, disabilities, and so forth. And I think that's going to be something that I hope that we look for in a superintendent to be able to demonstrate. In previous examples or other schools that they have had to dissect, our schools, 12 of them, are very, very different. So I hope that that person comes in and says, "Okay, let's look at one school at a time, and then a district goal as a whole."
Thank you. I don't want to miss anyone. If anyone wants to comment on any of the three questions before we call it a night, any more comments? We thank you very much. Our process goes on from here again. We collect this data plus the survey data, and we do pass that on to the board in the form of a leadership profile. And then we go recruiting for a couple of weeks. And then we won't meet with the board again until we do a presentation of candidates on a slate to them, somewhere about eight to 10 candidates, you know, and they will decide from there who they will see, who they will interview, and how they will move forward. There'll be at least two or three steps in that process, and we'll keep you apprised of how that moves forward till we get to the finalist stage. We, as a consulting firm, thank you for coming this night.
Good night.
Yeah, your meeting.
I just want to point out to the public that this whole, the purpose of this was to get information and feedback from the public. None of the board members up here actually could respond to these questions or answer these questions now. I don't want you to think that we're sitting up here not, without anything positive to say. A lot of us have a lot to say about this, but there's a time for trustees to be interviewed individually, so that's why we did not make comments up here. I want to thank everyone for their comments, they were productive, I really do appreciate it. And just seeing right now, I just want to point out, I'd like to give a special shout-out to Marty Reed, who actually is in the audience today. Last Saturday, he received a lifetime achievement award from the city of Bayonne for all of his service to the kids, so I just want to give him a shout-out and say congratulations, Marty. Thank you for coming. Thank you for everything that you do for Bayonne. Thank you so much.
I don't know about the sweatshirt he's wearing, but...
Oh, and then, what's the sweatshirt? Oh, wow, Marty, come on, you're killing me. I'm kidding. But congratulations, Marty, and thank you, everyone, for the comments, it was amazing. Appreciate it.
So is there a motion to adjourn the public meeting?
I'll motion.
A second?
I'll second.
So I have a motion and a second to adjourn. Trustee Alonso?
Yes.
Trustee Cruden?
Yes.
Trustee Munoz?
Yes.
Trustee Bellato?
Yes.
President Broderick?
Yes.
It is 8:06, the board will not return.